Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the West Orange Board of Education meeting and welcome to West Orange High School. Mr. Calavano?
Roll call, Mr. Charles?
Present.
Mrs. Lab?
Here.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Present.
Mr. Robertson?
Present.
Mrs. Schwartzbaum?
Present.
Please stand for their pledge of allegiance.
Notice of meeting, please take notice, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided for in the following manner. That a written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board at 4:00 PM on January 6, 2017. That said notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and a Star Ledger. That said notice was posted in the lobby of the Administration Building of the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Calavano. May I have a motion, please, for the closed and public minutes of April 19th and May 1st?
I'll move that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Rutske, superintendent report.
Thank you. We have the honor tonight of having Washington and Hazel with us, so I want to start by thanking the two principals and Ms. Granada. Ms. De Mayo is the principal of Washington, as everybody knows. Mr. Coaches is our new principal doing an outstanding job this year in his first year, and we have Ms. Granada with us as well. I'm going to ask Ms. Granada if she can come up to the microphone and get our presentation with our awesome students started. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening and thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present you, to you and our community, a snapshot of what our Title I students are learning and achieving in our Innovate New Jersey After-School Programs at Hazel and Washington Elementary Schools. The Innovate New Jersey After-School Program is an outgrowth of the Innovate Summer Blended and Personalized Learning Grant Program, which was held during the summer of 2016. The New Jersey Department of Education proposed a summer competitive grant to all school districts in New Jersey last spring with the intent to increase the academic achievement of students in Title I served schools during the summer months. The purpose of the grant was to provide participating districts with an opportunity to develop and implement a summer blended and personalized learning program to students in grades three through five that incorporated technology to supplement and complement their traditional school year instruction. West Orange was one of ten school districts awarded and received $98,200 to conduct a six-week summer program. Students attended four-hour sessions, five days per week, with an overall attendance rate of 92% at Washington and 95% at Hazel. And this is where it all began, a new and exciting relationship with DOT and DASH, two new members of a truly innovative and energized academic learning experience offered through the code.org curriculum. In a few moments, you will have an opportunity to meet these two robots who have brought enlightenment to learning and have activated many hidden talents in our Title I students. Without further delay, I would like to turn the presentation over to our school principals, teachers who are running the after-school programs, and the stars of the presentation, our students and their friends, DOT and DASH. And I'd like to turn it over to Will from Hazel Avenue School, the principal.
I am Will Coaches. I'm the principal of Hazel Avenue School. When I came in, this program was getting going, and it's a really amazing program. I would just like to thank Jennifer Sisman and Amri Tori, our two faculty members that do an amazing job learning the code curriculum and really engaging our students. And we have two of our students here tonight, Wendellin and Joe, and they were so wonderful to come and to show what they can really do. One of the big questions with coding is how does this really connect to our curriculum in so many different ways? And I want to keep this short and sweet, but for language arts and math, language arts, really understanding the elements of a story, sequencing by building that code, going back and editing, and editing through a story. In math, some of the ways is they're learning angles, they're reviewing multiplication, they're doing graphing, geometric shapes, division review. You can tie this to a wide variety of our Common Core standards, and it's showing in the classroom. So now I'm going to pass it off to Mr. Mayo, who's going to talk a little bit about the two different types of lessons they're learning.
Thank you, Will. I would also like to introduce my staff members, Alba La Consono and Wayne Oakley, and they do a wonderful job with our after-school program twice a week, and they work with all these, all our students on DASH and DASH, DOT and DASH. Okay, Plugged and Unplugged Lessons. These lessons, it's a coding curriculum using a spiraling design, which skills are revisited in each course. Each course consists of a blend of a Plugged Lesson, which are online activities, and Unplugged Lessons, which students can learn computing concepts with or without a computer. And if you look, there's a lesson overview, there's objectives, there's an introduction, activities, extended learning, and the connections, the connections to technology and education, science standards, math standards, language arts standards. So there is truly a connection. And now I would like to introduce a few of our students who have been part of the after-school program at Washington School.
Hi, my name is Athene Saint from Washington School in fifth grade, and we are here to introduce what we do in the After-School Coding Club. During Course Three of Code, we learned to think about the information that some websites request or require. We also learned the difference between private information and personal information, and understanding what is safe and unsafe to share online.
In our club, we got to explore what it means to be responsible and respectful to our offline and online communities. It had brought us a step closer to learning how to be a good digital citizen. Here is a short video of us expressing why code is, coding is important.
(inaudible)
I am a part of the After-School Coding Club. Coding is as easy as learning a language.
Here's a picture and what we did. We created mazes during the after-school program, and we programmed them to get through the mazes.
Coding helps to learn. Coding is fun. Coding is exciting. Coding challenges.
Now Hazel's students are now going to present DOT.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Werdle Gonzalez, and I'm here tonight with my classmate, Joe Felipe Miguel. We are representing the fourth and fifth graders at Hazel Avenue School who have been, who have been learning how to code on code.org, and then applying what we have learned to DASH and DOT. Unlike DASH, who you just saw, DOT cannot move, but can be programmed to talk, light up, and can also interact with DASH or other people. By creating algorithms, which include functions and conditionals, DOT can perform a variety of activities. Tonight, we will turn DOT into a magic eight ball.
Just like the toy that has been predicting the future since the 1950s, our magic dot ball will answer yes or no questions. Once we tell the program to start on our iPad, you simply ask the question, shake dot, and he will respond with an answer. At this time, I would like to ask two Board of Ed members to please stand up so that you can demonstrate the 21st century version of a toy that you may have all played with as children.
Howdy. Are you blue?
Shake, shake, shake.
So now you have to shake it.
I'll just shake it. Sorry. Do I need to ask it again, then shake it?
Yeah.
Are you blue?
I agree 100%.
Okay, so he's blue. Okay.
Whee!
Woo-hoo!
Bye-bye.
Start, okay.
Hi.
Is it 9:30 now?
I'm sorry to say, but the answer is no. Okay, see ya.
Thank you, everybody, for listening.
And one big round of applause for our teachers, our students from Washington and Hazel. They work really hard on this and love coding, so hopefully we can do a lot more of this in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, boys and girls. That was wonderful. As you can see, the Board of Ed needs a lesson in coding, so looking forward to learning more from you. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but I know you have a lot of homework, and you're excited to go home and do that. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on. Again, special thanks to Washington and Hazel. If I could invite, we're going to make just a little change in the presentation. We're going to move MAP up. We have several individuals here tonight that are going to speak to MAP. Mr. Mendez, if you don't mind coming up to the podium. We have Ms. Berg, who is the K-5 Mass Supervisor, Mr. Abu Hukim, who is the 612 Mass Supervisor, Ms. Venenciano, who is the 612 Language Arts Supervisor, Ms. Di Martinez, who is the K-5 Language Arts Supervisor, Ms. Turillo, who is a teacher at Washington, proud students walking out, and Ms. Ritter, who is with us from Mount Pleasant. So I want to thank all of you for being here tonight and helping us. We are going to discuss, this will be the longest presentation of the night of all the things that I have under the superintendent's report. We're going to talk to you about MAP in general and how we got to MAP and the assessment committee and so on. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Mendez to walk us through that. Please.
Good evening. As you know, Goal Two of the strategic plan is to set specific goals across each content area with the overarching aim of increasing student achievement. This is so that we can ensure that all of our students are challenged, that they have quality curriculum, and that they're demonstrating the outcomes of our expectations in terms of future success. To achieve this goal in our strategic plan, we, one of our action steps was to design an assessment framework, and a part of that framework would be to develop quality benchmark assessments, be able to frequently and consistently, consistently monitor that progress, inform instruction, implement intervention strategies, and over time, our hope is to close achievement gaps. With that said, the district established an assessment literacy team. It consists of teachers in grades four through eight, general education, special education, ESL, to begin to examine the current assessment structure. There were many pieces of feedback from teachers that there were many assessments that were being administered, and we began to examine the different assessments, the validity, the quality, the usefulness or meaningfulness for teachers, et cetera. That team came together throughout the year, defined what assessment was, defined what benchmark assessing, assessment was, and decided that they really needed something to inform their instruction, something that the teachers could use as a tool to inform their instruction. They also discussed the qualities and the characteristics that they were looking for in benchmark assessments. They were looking for something that would be online, that would be immediately scoreable, that they didn't have to develop necessarily or score themselves, so that they could continue to devote themselves to the instructional time, something that would really give them quality reports that would say, here are, here's where your students are in terms of instructional levels, and this is what you might be able to do in your small group instruction. So the team looked at four different assessment programs. After evaluating them, going online, having presenters come in, they decided that they were going to go with the MAP assessment system. And so then the MAP assessment system is really a tool, again, that's online. It will allow the students to go on in a approximate 50-minute setting in ELA or math. They can assess in content, not at grade level. It's adaptive. And so what that means is that the first question on the MAP may be at grade level, but if I continue to push through the scoring, or if I continue to get the questions correct, it will take me as high as I can go, right? And so then it'll take me to my instructional level. It will be appropriate for all of our students then. It'll give us a clear reflection of where they are in terms of readiness for instruction. There is a kindergarten component for screeners. There is a component where students coming in new to the district, while mom is registering or dad is registering, the student can go online, take a quick assessment. That way, by the time we walk them to their classroom, we already have an idea of where they are. It does allow us to assess in math and ELA, in K through 10 is where we're going to begin as a district. It allows us to assess math in Spanish for grades two up, so that way our bilingual students can be assessed in native language. It allows us to consider placement into different programs, such as basic skills, honors, and gifted. It does project part performance and ACT performance, and it also links students to colleges that pair up with the skills that they're showing on their assessments. We've had an assessment committee. We've also had an implementation committee that has come together to say, how are we going to roll this out? And so then we have two teachers here who are going to share with us, Jen Turillo and Sherri Ritter, and they're going to talk to us about what they learned in the assessment committee, implementation, how, what their impact is for instruction, and also what the impact is for student performance. So if you could come and share. And then Liz will talk to us about the middle and high school impact.
Hi, good evening. First thing is, I usually work with small groups of students, so this is, first of all, it's student-friendly. There's an audio component. It can be taken relatively quickly, as opposed to our kindergarten first-grade assessment now can take several, over a course of several days, so that's great. The information that we get can, can be, make an instant connection between assessment and targeted instruction for small group and guided instruction. And I think that the MAP will provide a map in conjunction with our, with the information that we get from Fountas and Pennell Benchmark Assessments, which is a running record of reading behaviors. I think those two, the two pieces should support and validate one another as far as lexile level and reading levels. Being on the committee, I just, as a sidebar, I've been on a lot of committees in the past, and the task of looking for an assessment, and then finally deciding on the MAP, it's been a year-long process for teachers, supervisors, and administrators. It's been done very thoughtfully and with a lot of respect, and very thoroughly, and I really think that with the proper turnkeying and PD, that it'll be rolled out and received pretty positively by the teachers.
I teach for, I teach grade, sorry, grade five ELA, and I think it will help us because it's going to measure the student achievement in the moment, and it will measure also their growth three different times during the year. So since we switch classes and there's differ, and we have so much differentiation, you can do specific skill needs for your children or your students in your class. You can make your skills groups based on immediate data. You don't have to wait. You get the immediate feedback. I think that's the biggest thing that will help the teachers move forward. You can make fluid groups of learning that maybe they didn't do well on one skill, but then on another skill, they're doing really well, so they don't have to be in that same skill group. As a parent, we have it in my district, and it's fabulous. I can see how my students have done, how my children have done, their growth, their development. So I think it would really be beneficial for us all together to have it.
I just wanted to share comments from two other committee members representing the middle school who could not be here tonight. Amy McKinsey is a sixth-grade teacher at Edison, and she wanted to share that MAP will help provide information that can assist her with grouping for more specific instruction, help her know the areas where she needs to spend more time on the curriculum, as well as areas where the students are already at and beyond grade level. And so she feels that with MAP, students should be met with greater success because they can be instructed at the, a level that's appropriate for each of them. Colleen Tierney was also on the committee, and she is a special ed teacher at Roosevelt, and she said that because the benchmarks are intended for driving instruction, the way in which the MAP test is designed and administered allows teachers to assess their students by identifying their instructional level. The tool will enable teachers to target instructional skills based on student strengths and needs. She also feels that the data from MAP allows students to begin at their present levels of academic functioning. The starting point gives a more accurate and realistic measure of growth. MAP is customized in terms of time. The feature has an impact on student performance being administered in chunks of time rather than all in one sitting. So it can start and stop depending upon the student. So it can be a little bit over a series of, you know, 20 minutes a day for three days as part of instructional stations, or it can be done in one sitting, but it's really up to the student. And overall, just kind of looking at it through the lens of secondary, middle school, and high school, you know, one of the things is that MAP provides teachers with specific, immediate, and meaningful data on students that are in front of them, rather than much of the current data we have from standardized testing that we get after the students have left our classes. MAP provides data on student lexile level and where, and levels of reading that are appropriate, application of language and grammar skills, and readiness in each area of math, data we did not have before at the secondary level. MAP allows teachers to save time figuring out their students' needs and spend more time addressing the needs of each student, whether it be intervention, practice, and/or enrichment by providing specific skills to either reinforce, develop, or introduce for each student in their class. In addition to providing teachers with usable data, it can also assist in examining the curriculum across each grade level and as the department as a whole. Although MAP is an adaptive assessment that changes to meet the needs of each student, at the secondary level, it also mirrors the structure and format of the ACT, and in the future, the SAT, to provide students with embedded practice but at their current level of learning. Thank you.
So currently, the grades, we have benchmark assessments. The benchmark assessments will be taken away from the teachers, and we will replace it with the MAP, so we will not have an additional, right? It will be in exchange of, except these will better align to the standards and, again, be able to give the teachers immediate feedback. On June 5th, we plan to present all of our staff with an overview during faculty meetings and department meetings, and then in September with professional development, and then in October 9th for our district PD, we plan to have already administered the MAP once and have reports, so now we can sit with the teachers and let's look at the data and start to inform the instruction and how they will use that information.
There are many very positive things about MAP. The two that stand out are the superb reports that the teachers get, and there are a multitude of them. They're helpful, they're useful, and they're user-friendly. The other piece is the immediate. I heard Ms. Venenciano talk about the immediate feedback, and Ms. Turillo talked about the fluent grouping. That's really key, that you don't continue to keep the same groups for the same, the same skills, because kids have mastered, they
Although MAP is an adaptive assessment that changes to meet the needs of each student, at the secondary level, it also mirrors the structure and format of the ACT, and in the future, the SAT, to provide students with embedded practice but at their current level of learning. Thank you.
So currently, the grades, we have benchmark assessments. The benchmark assessments will be taken away from the teachers, and we will replace it with the MAP, so we will not have an additional, right? It will be in exchange of, except these will better align to the standards, and again, be able to give the teachers immediate feedback. On June 5th, we plan to present all of our staff with an overview during faculty meetings and department meetings, and then in September with professional development, and then in October 9th for our district PD, we plan to have already administered the MAP once and have reports, so now we can sit with the teachers and let's look at the data and start to inform the instruction and how they will use that information.
There are many very positive things about MAP. The two that stand out are the superb reports that the teachers get, and there are a multitude of them. They're helpful, they're useful, and they're user-friendly. The other piece is the immediate. I heard Ms. Venenciano talk about the immediate feedback, and Ms. Trillo talked about the fluent grouping. That's really key, that you don't continue to keep the same groups for the same, the same skills, because kids have mastered, they should be in something else working on something they haven't. But the program is superb. Ms. Trillo also spoke as a parent. It really allows you to see the growth and development. It really is a growth model as far as the, letting the parent see what their child has done. It also helps them realize that maybe there is an area of weakness, that they can have a conversation with the teacher on what is the teacher doing to help them, and what they can do at home as well. So we're not going to ask for the approval tonight. What we're going to do is put this on the June 12th meeting for the approval. But I do want to thank everyone who came out for this tonight, and give the board an opportunity to ask questions to Mr. Mendez or myself. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Ruski. We'll start with Mr. Charles. Do you have any questions?
I just have two, two questions. How much PD is going to be needed for this? A few hours a day?
The initial is really just how to sign the students on, because it's very similar to any other online assessment. We'll have usernames and passwords assigned to the students over the summer, so when teachers come in, it'll take no more than an hour and a half to say, this is how you sign the students on. The real PD, beginning in October, is going to focus on the instructional level of the students in those reports. So how do you use this data to inform your instruction, to form small groups, and to grow the student?
Okay. My last question is, the committee, about how many members are on the committee?
Twenty teachers, our additional supervisors, general education, special education, and ESL teachers.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Laup.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Schratchbahn?
Sounds very impressive. It sounds that it's effective, measurable, and the key, I think, that many of you said was inability to make decisions real-time or very quickly as opposed to waiting time. So it sounds great, and hopefully we can implement it very quickly.
Mr. Robertson?
I see there are a number of advantages for this, certainly standardization of assessment, because I know as we're doing benchmark assessments, having different people design different assessments, not necessarily the same level of standardization, continuity in assessment, you know, great opportunity for that as well, and being able to assess kids both in the moment, as well as looking at three points of assessment throughout the year to check what the progress, what the growth is. I understand that. Given that assessments have to, are measuring growth, and that our curriculum is instructing the children in a path to achieve that growth, what are we doing? My first question is, what are we doing to ensure that the assessments, granted, the assessment's standards-based, what are we doing to ensure that the assessments and the cur, and the current curricula are in fact in sync?
So I think you alluded to the answer, they're standards-based, right? So the assessments are standards-based, and our curricula is standards-based, and the revisions of the curricula are definitely moving us in a clearer understanding of how to unpack those standards and have them measured. When we look at the reports, we're able to disaggregate that data by standard area, by cluster area, and by skill set. And so then we will be able to see how, where the student's instructional level is as it relates to that standard, and how we will need to scaffold or, and/or spiral our curriculum to meet the needs of the student. And so then each time the student may push into a standard, it would be at a different level of depth, just as the curriculum would need to. So that's where the alignment would be. It would be in using the standards and how a student is performing against that standard to push into the curriculum at a deeper level.
Okay. It was great to hear that it's going to be also supporting our children's development in regard to performance on the ACT, and it sounds like in the future, SAT. Since this is currently going to be K through 10, and given that the, what's tested on the PSAT is what they're first tested on initially in 10th grade, then first semester, 11th grade, will it also address PSAT in terms of its emphasis, because it's a little different from ACT?
Currently, the alignment is to the ACT, and the projections are toward the ACT. In the future, as they move toward the SAT and the PSAT, then I'd be able to better answer the question. We can see how the students perform this first year and do some comparisons with their scores on those assessments, and then receive guidance from our professional development.
Okay. Last, in terms of standardization, I heard mention of honors and gifted and talented being a part of this. So it sounds as if there's the opportunity to incorporate the honors, whatever standards we're setting for honors, into how this assessment is utilized, as well as for gifted and talented. Is that correct?
Absolutely. So the assessment MAP proper measures on a RIT scale, which really measures growth, but there is a norming scale. So it will give us norming scales or norming performance as per grade level, and it also gives us percentiles, and it says, the average student who is in a gifted program, or a student who is characteristically, better said, in a gifted program, performs in the 95th percentile on the MAP. So we have that norming, we have those reference charts available, and in our gifted committee, we've already looked at how we would consider MAP assessment results to inform gifted placement as one of multiple criteria. Equally, we'll begin to have those discussions for honors and for basic skills across the gamut. We will be able to use it because of the norming and the referencing that we have available to us.
Well, right there, that represents a significant change, because currently, we're doing top 1% to top 3%, I believe, for GNT or HAP, and this would expand it, which has actually been discussed before.
To the fifth percent.
To the, to the fifth percentile. So 95th percentile, that's great. For honors, what percentile did you have in mind?
We have not discussed honors yet. We've really discussed it at length for gifted. That would be a next step for us.
Okay. Also, just from, and this is actually, it's more to Mr. Ruski, from a process standpoint, I understand that you're having a meeting with teachers at large on June 5th? Is that correct?
We're, we're having, after school, we have staff meetings set up. This is going to be introduced to all of them. Remember, there's committee members, there's implementation members, and they'll be doing, the teachers will be doing the presenting to the other teachers within their building. And then we'll be having the opportunity, come back on day one, to provide additional PD on the program, and then October 9th is the full-day PD, and that's really when we'll break out. So they'll get a chance to utilize it a little bit, and then we'll really start getting into the reporting, and that's where the importance of the program is, that we're looking at that good data.
Okay. I would only caution in terms from a process standpoint, since from both policy and statute, statute was at 18A colon 33 dash 1, that no course of study shall be adopted or altered until basically accepted through recorded roll call by the board. So I was wondering beforehand, are we going to be able to get examples? We don't know what's on the current honors test. Are we going to be able to get examples of how this will be applied, like sample questions, sample applications?
You mean for math, MAP itself?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can, you, there's a spot, you can go online, we can, we can send, we can have it out there. You can go and look at things.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. First, I'd just like to say thank you to the faculty and administration for all your hard work. This was, you know, really a lot of in-depth work, working on this over a year. I believe in the beginning, you mentioned that the members of the committee was between 4th grade and 8th grade. Were there any high school faculty, teachers on the team?
No, not at the, not at the beginning. We will be, begin to roll out to the upper levels, to the high school.
Okay, thank you. And my other questions were answered, but I just have one other question, which I'm sure you can't answer tonight. Is there any feedback from other school districts who are already using this program that you can share with us in June 12th?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, it's excellent, and you have a really good resource right in front of you there.
I'm not a teacher, but as a parent, I got a sheet every year that shows three times a year in the mail, it shows the work of the student behind the year, and it shows your child versus the other kids in the school or district, and then it also shows. Just come up to the mic for me, please. It's okay. It's all. Sorry. You get a little, you get three times a year a letter in the mail with your information of how your child did. It comes with a little pie. It's very easy to read. It's not difficult. I think it, they also said at the meeting that it will also come in Spanish, which would be very helpful, too. But it's, as I said, very easy to read. You see how your child did versus other students in the same district, and then you also see how they did nationally. So, and as a parent, I could actually go to the teachers' meeting, if I wasn't a teacher, and say, well, what are you doing to help with this skill here? How are they doing? And I could see the development over the year. I have my kids from kindergarten, they're now in eighth, one's in eighth and one's in seventh, so I've seen the growth every year, so it's a great tool. Do you have any other questions?
Thank you. This looks like it's going to be very beneficial to the faculty, and anything to make their workload a little lighter is great. And it's good that it's online, so they don't have to write the benchmark assessments for every subject every year.
Well, you know, one, one of the things about being online, if you remember when Park came in, there was a lot of districts saying, it's okay, our kids are used to being online. Many of them had MAP, and many of them went ahead and they were comfortable taking assessments online. We just weren't there yet. So MAP's been around for a very long time. I think you'll find it to be very successful. Ms. Ritter, thank you very much for coming out. Ms. Trillo.
Thank you.
Ms. Di Martinez, Ms. Venenciano, Ms. Ray, Ms. Berg, thank you. I know you have long days. You do not need to stick around. We're moving off of MAP here. You're welcome to stay. You don't have to, though. Thank you so much.
Good to see you all. Thank you for coming in.
Okay, we're just going to go ahead and move on. I'm just going to give a, a kind of a review on the world language update that we talked about last meeting. Just so we're clear, and, and the appointment, or the, I'm sorry, the approval will come next meeting when we need to add in the course for 6th grade. So what we were discussing last meeting was that in 6th grade, the changes will be, we'll start with the middle school. Our current 5th grade students, when they move to 6th grade next year, they will have a half-year of Spanish and a half-year of Mandarin. Currently, they get a quarter of Spanish now. So we're going to have mandatory Mandarin for a half a year, and then Spanish for a half a year. We feel that's going to really set that foundation, moving up into 7th, 8th grade, and clearly into high school. Then, when those students who are current 5th grade finish their 6th grade year, they will then have the opportunity to choose one of the four subjects that we currently offer, French, Italian, Spanish, or Mandarin, and they will have that all year on an AB schedule, meaning it'll be every other day. And then, when they move into their 8th grade year, they will stay in that same subject, and they will have it every day. It will not be an AB schedule. Now, we're going to phase this in over the three years, so our, in, our current 5th grade students will be the first year moving into the 6th, and then as they move up, the students behind them obviously will continue what they have set. One of the more important pieces is for next year, we're going to be looking now at the K5 world language process, and determining what we can do to strengthen that program, and, and seeing, one of the, one of the things we clearly know is, anything offered one time per week for a short amount of time may be part of the problem. So we're going to be evaluating that whole program next year, the K5 piece, and, and be looking at making some adjustments where we can make adjustments. Okay, Mr. Mendez, you want to add anything to the, okay. Any questions? Again, it was just more about what we, we discussed, want to make sure we're moving forward. And again, what'll be on the agenda next meeting is the approval of the 6th grade class in Mandarin.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right into that, one of the components on here is the three-year bilingual plan. And what we're going to do tonight, again, this is not required to be approved until the June 12th meeting. We're going to discuss it tonight, and then we have to have it approved on the 12th, and then submitted to the state by the 30th. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Mendez to talk about the three-year plan. Please.
Every three years, each district is required to complete a three-year bilingual plan to address how it's going to meet the needs of its limited English proficient students or English language learners. In that three-year bilingual plan, we have to complete assurances. You'll find those assurances on page two and on page six, for which we have checked off, an assurance that we are meeting each of the policies as set forth by the bilingual department, and that we have created a plan that is viable, that will meet the needs of all of our ELLs. In district, we currently have approximately 131 students. You will see those numbers throughout the plan by grade level. The first section talks about program staff certifications, and we're required to say which of our teachers are certified in ESL, in bilingual, or both. The second area discusses program type, and it asks the district to define what type of program we're offering our Ls. So the state does require bilingual education when a district has more than 20 students that speak the same language across the district. You are allowed to apply for a waiver, however, if that's a geographical challenge. That would be us. Why? Because while we have more than 20 students in the district who speak Spanish, and more than 20 who speak Creole, they are spread out throughout the district. So we may only have 17 in one school and 20 in another school, making it virtually impossible to provide bilingual programming. So we have applied for waivers for Spanish bilingual programming consistently for the past, I'm not sure how many years, over 10. And this year, you will see us apply for a waiver for Creole as well, because we now have more than 20 students in district who speak Creole. When we do not provide a bilingual program, then, we must provide an alternative program, and the alternative program must be English-based, it must be ESL or high intensity and/or sheltered instruction. So ESL at our elementary is what we're offering our students. It must be equal in number to the minutes that they receive ELA. So in K3, they receive 90 minutes of ELA. That would mean that they must also receive 90 minutes of ESL. In grades four and five, they receive 85 minutes of ELA, therefore, they must receive 85 minutes of ESL. So we are assuring to that fact in this plan, that we will offer and meet the state guideline, or the state requirement to offer equal number of minutes for ESL. At the middle school and high school levels, we have to offer double. That's called high intensity. So if at the high school, there's a 55-minute block for ELA, then we have to offer a 55-minute block for ESL plus another period. So we are meeting that at the high school, we are meeting that at the middle school. We must also offer sheltered instruction. Sheltered instruction at the middle and high school level means that all of the general education teachers who are servicing ESL students have had a minimum of 15 hours of professional development and certification on how to provide intervention and strategies for the second language learner. We currently have 30 staff members in district who are trained in sheltered instruction, and we're looking to double that number next year. The next section is program assurances, and I've just gone through the assurances. This will also include having a bilingual parent advisory committee, making sure that we're reaching out to our parents and communicating what the program entails and what their rights are. Again, the number of minutes. It also talks about class sizes and maxes, similar to what you would see with a special education class. There's max class sizes. We have those for the English language learner population as well. And then the last section of the plan is a program description, and that's what we're working on now. That's why we're preparing to give you an overview of how we will meet the ESL population program description at the next board meeting. And that really sums up the plan. The plan is due on June 30th, so at June 12th, at that board meeting, then we will be present again to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, so that leads us right into the ESL update. What we're going to ask the board is to give, Mr. Mendez and I, one more meeting on the June 12th. There's a couple other things that we are researching and looking into that were not available by this meeting, so we have some different meetings set up to gather that information. So we're going to table the ESL update, and, and, but it was... So we're going to table the ESL update, but it was, it's important that we understand the bilingual plan and what we have to do to submit that bilingual plan. So does anybody have any questions for Mr. Mendez on the bilingual plan? Again, tonight is just for you to hear the overview of it, give you the document to look at it, study, and then we can come back on the 12th. But if there's anything we can answer for you now, certainly we'll do that.
Sure. I'll start with Mr. Robertson.
Very quickly, because I still actually need to really read this more thoroughly. It sounds great that you're going to have this bilingual parents committee, but what are some of the strategies that are going to be used? Often, engaging our parents, our families, and the community has been a challenge and making sure that they can really be a partner in their child's success. What are some of the strategies that we intend to use? And do any of them also involve, since smartphone penetration is actually pretty high, including in this market, do any, do any of the strategies include video, online video, or mobile platforms?
That's actually the charge of the bilingual committee. So as we assemble that committee, then they will reach out to, they will give us feedback. They will reach out to other community members that are in that program, and they will assist us to develop a clear set of strategies and how we will ensure that the parent involvement is meaningful and that the relationship or the partnership that we have between parents and the district, that school-home connection, is valuable for their child as well as the parent. Because when we're servicing our second language children, we're often servicing our second language parents.
Elaborate on the differentiation between ELL, English language learner, and ESL?
Sure. English language learner is the designation of the student. I have a first language other than English, so I'm an English language learner. ESL is the course, much like English nine. English 10 is the name of the course. ESL is the name of my course, English as a second language.
Ms. Lab?
Just following up on Mr. Robertson's comment. I know we spoke about it, but I think contacting Deputy Mayor Rodolfo Rodriguez will, and the West Orange Hispanic Organization will be a great asset to the success of this program.
I agree.
Mr. Charles?
I just want to add what Ms. Lab and Mr. Robertson said. When we seek the parent involvement, I think it's important to hit all avenues, both social media and traditional, but also make sure that, you know, it may sound ridiculous, but that it's in the language that they understand, you know, some of the, you know, whether it's Creole, French, Spanish, Portuguese, those types of things. It's important as well.
Absolutely. That's one of the assurances that we're signing off on tonight, that we are required by state law to communicate in the language of the student and the parent. So absolutely, we will meet that.
This will lead to Mr. Ruskey. One of the things, and to Ms. Mendez, as we look at our website, the language translation function of the website, I've got a lot of feedback on that, is less than ideal. And if we're building out a program that's going to serve so many families, we may wish to consider having a dedicated portion of our website that is, in fact, that is truly bilingual to support the program.
We'll take a look at that. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mendez, for all your hard work. My only, I guess, comment, I echo my colleagues' questions and comments, but I put the three-year plan of 2014 to 2017 side by side with this new plan, and I noticed some significant differences. And I'm sure that's because of the assurances that CUSAC came up with. But I also noticed that there are parents who refused. So we really need to make sure that we explain to parents the importance of this program.
Sure. This is a new template that came out this year, so hence the differences. And the refusals is a new part of this template. There were two parents who refused services. And the new assurance for this year moving forward would then be that for parents who refuse services, we're still required to meet the needs of those students in a different setting and to monitor them for two years and to reassess and see if they're eligible every year.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, just two comments about the special ed assurances. We're going to table that. We also have it on the agenda for first reading. We're going to pull that back for this meeting and put it on our next meeting. This is something that's new this year, the assurances. And in February, there was some guidance put out by the different organizations on what we needed to do to make sure it was included in our policies for special education to cover the assurances. And there's quite a bit of them. There's 24 different pieces that need to be included. So we needed to go through each of our policies and determine, was that language in there and was it representative of the assurances? We are finished with that process, but we're going to pull it back and look at one other piece. So that'll be on the next agenda. So we'll be, Mr. Calavano, we'll be pulling that off the agenda as well, as far as first reading. Staying on special ed for a moment, I just want to give a quick update. It's not on the superintendent's report, but the special education audit is moving forward. If you remember, we appointed BGK&amp;K for the group to do it, and they have begun pulling files, doing some of the paperwork. I spoke to them last week, and they're going to be setting up the parent meetings where they can, parents can come in and have those conversations about what the district's doing well and areas where we can improve. But also, there'll be a survey available to the parents for those that cannot attend those meetings and provide that feedback. But there's going to be meetings with the teachers and administrators, et cetera. So a lot of that information's going to be coming soon. If, you know, we had the first group and we had to change to the second group, BGK&amp;K, which delayed us a little bit, but they assured us it'll be done by the summertime, which we were hoping to have it done by the end of the school year, and we had to make that adjustment. They made it very clear. They had another district that they were finishing up. They come highly recommended, so we're excited to get the feedback from them. So I just wanted to give both of those updates and just explain that the assurances are going to be put off until the next opportunity for a meeting. All right. I'm just going to move to, I'm going to skip the board member ethics training. That's for our attorneys. I don't see, is Matt, okay. Mr. Giacobi, you want to come up? And we'll go ahead and switch to him, and then we'll come back to the superintendent's report. Do you want to use the podium? Okay. Just, you want to explain to the public? You want me to, Matt? Sure.
Matt Giacobi. I'm here to do the annual board member ethics training. This is required by law that we go through board member ethics training, and it's somewhat counterintuitive. A lot of folks, the people out in the audience, a lot of different board members, think that when they get elected to a board, it's like being elected mayor or a council person in the town. It's very, very different. And the reason it's very different is the laws that regulate school ethics are very different from the laws that regulate municipal ethics. And people say, "Why is that? Why don't they have the same set of ethics?" And the reason is, is that generally, board members have family members, i.e. students in the district, or they've had family members that work in the district, et cetera. And because there's the possibility of board members having students in the district, what the law is designed to do is that board members make policy. They make sure the schools are well-run. They do not run the schools. Unlike a, in your town, you have a mayor. And in your town, the mayor is a Faulkner, former government. That mayor makes personnel decisions, metes out discipline, negotiates contracts, et cetera. When you're in a school context, the board member's power rests as a board as a whole, and it's really in the developing the policies. And I heard you guys talking about policies this evening. That's your goal and your job to do. And ultimately, what happens is that you hire somebody, namely your superintendent and your business administrator, to run the district. Again, it's your job to make sure the schools are well-run. It's their job to run the district. And I use an analogy. Basically, King and Queen Ferdinand and Isabella, they funded the trip for Columbus. They bought the boats. They bought the compasses, the sextants. They got the sailors. They paid the wages. And then they said, "We're going to hire Columbus, get us to the New World. You guys are like the King and Queen, and that's Columbus. And he gets you to the New World." And so it's not your job to interfere in the day-to-day operations of administering programs, administering personnel. And the outline that I've given you outlines case after case that deals with when board members go awry and what gets them in trouble. One of the fundamental things that board members have to understand is that you, as a board, have no individual power outside of this room. However, when you get together, you're probably one of the most powerful boards in the entire town. Frankly, the budget you control is, I'm sure, far larger than the municipal budget. So your ability to craft a budget, that's one of the fundamental roles of a board, and your ability to ultimately hire a superintendent as your chief school administrator to run the schools is a fundamental goal for you. Now, ultimately, what happens is when board members get in trouble, and I'll go through some real-life examples, and they're outlined in here. I'm not going to go through this line by line. You can read this at your leisure. There are cases where board members get involved in something where they either have a direct or indirect pecuniary interest. What does that mean? It means they have a financial interest. So if you're a board member and you're advocating to hire a certain insurance broker, for example, and you have an ownership interest in that company, that's a problem. There are cases in here where board members overstep their lines. So there's one in here where a board member decided, a board president decided to rice employees, to rice the BA, to reprimand the BA, to get involved in personnel decisions. And it's called Inwood Ray Woodbine. That board member was removed from the board. The School Ethics Commission said, "That's inappropriate. You cannot run the districts. That's a superintendent's job." Now, a lot of these cases deal with conflicts that arise in the context of students. So this is the basic rule. You, as a board member, if you have a student in school and your son or daughter is the only person who plays the oboe in the band, and you come up at a board meeting and you say, "We need to get a new oboe for the band," well, the only person who's going to benefit from that is your son or daughter. That would be a problem. However, if you have a son or daughter that goes to the school, and they're on the football team, and there's a whole host of kids that are on the football team, the School Ethics Commission has ruled that if it's benefiting a whole group of kids, you can vote for it. That'd be the same thing with textbooks. If you're buying a series of textbooks, math textbooks, for the middle school, and you have a son or daughter in the middle school, you can vote on that. Where it becomes even more problematic is there's been a lot, the School Ethics Commission has changed drastically over the last several years. It's become much more stringent in terms of what they find to be violative of the school ethics code, and their advisory opinions have become much, much more circumscribed. So let me give you an example. Many, many years ago, and for a number of years, when it came to negotiating contracts, the rule was that if you had a family member who was a direct employee of the district, you had to recuse yourself from the entire process, including the vote. But if you were a board member who had a family member employed by a union in another district, so let's hypothetically say that Ms. Lab's son is a teacher in Montclair. The rule was, is that you could not participate in the negotiation process, but ultimately, when a memorandum of agreement was signed, it was coming before the board for a ratification vote, at that time, you could learn what was negotiated and you could vote on it. That's no longer the rule. The School Ethics Commission has ruled that if you have a family member that's directly employed by the district, you can't participate at all. You're precluded, including reviewing the MOA and voting on it. And if you have a family member who works for another district, you are precluded. And the definition of family member, you have to look if it's a spouse, child, et cetera, could preclude you from voting on it if that person has a leadership role in another union. Now, if your spouse works for the NGA, you have to preclude yourself from voting. It's gone so far as that there's also rules that say that if you get, as a board member, if you are endorsed or supported by the local union, that's as if you have a family member. And there's ethics guides that say that if they publicly support you and endorse you, you're then precluded from participating in negotiations and voting on the contract. Now, this has created quite a conundrum, because what has happened is there are districts where people have family members that are involved in other unions, et cetera. And with a five-member board, let's hypothetically say three of you had conflicts, then you don't have enough, you don't have a quorum that could vote on the ratification of a contract. So what do you do? You have to do what's known as the doctrine of necessity and pass a resolution disclosing the ethical conflicts. You have to publish it on your website. You have to send it to the School Ethics Commission. And then for that vote, and that vote only, the conflicted board members can vote. So it's become very, very difficult. The School Ethics Commission has gone so far as to prescribe limits on how much board members can volunteer in schools. So many years ago, we got an ethics advisory opinion where the School Ethics Commission ruled that a board member could also serve as the PTA president of a local PTA. They had multiple PTAs, and it was one PTA within the town. And the advisory opinion said that if that PTA is making a gift to the board, then that person should recuse themselves. There's been a recent advisory opinion late last year that basically said that board members should limit their volunteer activities. Now, can you go in and read a book to the children? Yes, you can. But they don't want a board member to be overly involved in the day-to-day operations because they don't want employees to feel like they're getting pressured or this board member is watching them and evaluating them. So it's really a separation between your role as creating policy, and then, once you create the policy, directing the superintendent and his or her staff to implement those policies. And if a policy's not working, it's your job as the board then to refine those policies and create new policies that you would then direct the superintendent to implement. Now, in terms of, another thing that I wanted to touch on in terms of ethics is board members under the Open Public Meeting Act, right now, we're in an open public meeting. We're conducting a meeting in front of the public. The public has a right to watch. You adjudicate your decisions on policies, bill lists, et cetera. They have a right to come up and speak during the public portion. And why are they all here? Because this is a notice meeting. This meeting is noticed in the paper. It's noticed on the website. It's noticed probably in town hall and the clerk's office. So it's an open public meeting that people have notice of and can come out and participate in government. And what has become a huge problem in New Jersey is the advent of email. And what ends up happening is very often, you will have more than a quorum of board members participating in email dialogues. And that is a violation of the Open Public Meeting Act. Because once three of you are together, you can take action. So if tonight, we had a board meeting, and two of you are absent and three of you are here, the three of you could vote on bill lists, on introduction of policies, et cetera. There's a few things that you couldn't vote on. There's certain personnel actions that require a majority of the full board or supermajority, but for the most part, you can conduct business. And so what happens is, under the Open Public Meeting Act, when people are conducting email discussions among board members or elected officials, and it constitutes a quorum, that's a violation of the Open Public Meeting Act, which could subject you guys to ethical problems. Now, the good news is that whenever you're dealing with the School Ethics Commission, because the body that adjudicates this and oversees board member conduct is called the School Ethics Commission. And the School Ethics Commission has the ability to issue advisory opinions. They will not issue an advisory opinion about conduct that you already did. So you can't say, "Oh, no. I voted on my wife's raise. Let me get an advisory opinion, make sure that was okay." They won't answer that. But I'll give you a perfect example. I represent a board in which one of the board members is a high school referee through the NJSIAA, and she does... the NJSIAA, and she does swimming and gymnastics throughout a different county. And occasionally, when you, towards the end of the season, these kids get into these county-wide competitions. So she came to me and said, "I'm worried. What if I'm a referee at an upcoming event, and one of the students that's in our district is participating in that event, in a swim meet or a gymnastics competition?" So I said, "Let's get an advisory opinion." So we wrote to the School Ethics Commission, and the School Ethics Commission will opine in writing, it takes usually about a month, whether or not you could do it. In that case, they said, "Yes, you can. It's intenuated. You're not, you're going to be judging them on their athletic competition, not as a board member," and they permitted it. There are other advisory opinions, for example, and in the back of my handout, there's a whole series of advisory opinions, and we update these fairly regularly, it's towards the end of the handout, to give you an idea of what constitutes things that they have a problem with and their recommendations. And the one thing that I will tell, I tell all board members, is there's really nothing that you have to decide that's emergent. I mean, unless the roof of the building gets blown off, or there is some type of natural disaster, there's nothing that's an emergency. And so you're better off, if you have a question, talk to the superintendent, reach out to myself, and we can give you guidance. We can research it and say, "I don't think you should vote on this. I think you should recuse yourself." And if for some reason you're at a board meeting and you're unsure of it, my suggestion is, recuse yourself. Say, "I'm going to abstain." Now, what's important about that? What does abstention mean? An abstention means that you're not going to participate in the vote. But courts have held that you can't participate in the discussion on an issue, and then at the last moment before the vote, say, "Oh, and by the way, I'm abstaining." There's a famous case that came out of Monmouth County dealing with a planning board, where the planning, a planning board member actively participated in the discussion of an application. And when it came time to vote, the planning board member said, "I'm going to abstain. I have a conflict." And the court said, "Your conflict was started all the way back then. It doesn't, you can't cure a conflict by not voting." So my suggestion to you is, is if you have a conflict on an issue, hypothetically, you have a business interest in a vendor that's coming before the board, the best thing to do is not only abstain, step off the dais, recuse yourself, and then come back on when that vote's done. You don't want to have anybody suggesting that you in any way tried to influence something by your mere presence if you have a conflict. Now, the other thing that I've handed out is a conflict interest questionnaire. And this is something that you guys should complete. You did it last year, and I'd recommend that you do this each year. And what this does is, it's basically a disclosure for board members to tell us, "Do you have any relatives who work for the school district? Do you have any family members living in your household who work for any school district in the state? Do you have any relatives living within or outside your home who have a leadership role in the union?" The reason that we ask this is that this gives us guidance, so that if we get into any type of negotiations, we can provide you guidance as to whether or not you should recuse yourself or not recuse yourself. And this is just a handout that we've created that just helps you identify the new murky world of the School Ethics Commission. And like I said, this changed last year, and for many, many years, people who had family members that weren't in a union could participate. Now, you can no longer participate. I don't know if you have any questions that you'd like to ask me about school ethics, school ethics, what you can and can't do?
It's time.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, just a couple more things, and then we'll get down to the HIV report and the athletic report. I had several conversations with some teachers a couple weeks ago, and one of the teachers said to me, and she told me it was fine username, Deb Cohen, high school teacher, phenomenal teacher, and she said, "Can I just ask you a question?" I said, "Sure." And she said, "How did we get to coming back to school on Wednesday? You know, normally, we come back on Tuesday." And I said, "Yeah." I said, "We had some different drafts, and when they were presented, one of the board members suggested, because it's so challenging to everybody trying to get back on Labor Day, do we have to open up on Tuesday? Could we open up Wednesday?" And there was discussion with the board and so on and so forth. And she said, "Okay." And I said, "So why are you asking?" And she said, "Well," she said, "you know, it's one thing when we come in on Friday, and then we have Labor Day, and then we come back on Tuesday, but now that we don't have to come in on Tuesday, we're starting on Wednesday, would you consider having the first day for staff be on Tuesday?" And I said, you know, I sat there for a minute, and I, you know, thought, I said, "Look, to me, I don't see any problem with that. I don't see, you know, I don't think there's any issue." I said, "But let me just check around and, you know, let me think about it." So I met with the administrative team and said, "You know, there's been a proposal and the idea about, instead of making everybody come back on Friday, we have them come back on Tuesday." And obviously, I broached that with all of you, and I do not see an issue with that. So I think it would be beneficial to those individuals who are still away for Labor Day weekend, that they don't have to come back on Friday, that they could come back on Labor Day, and then on Tuesday, we could have the staff come in, and then we could start school on Wednesday. Again, I checked with lots of different individuals, and I don't see any problem with that whatsoever. And Deb was, you know, the only person who really came up and said anything to me. I know there was a couple comments at one board meeting, but there was no suggestion about having the Tuesday and the Wednesday. So I really, I don't know if Deb is here, but I want to thank Deb for doing that. I know Jeanie, is Deb here? I know Jeanie Torito came up, and Mark came up and said something about the contract, how do we get, or the calendar. But I don't have a problem at all with moving and changing it. We would need to inform the staff, but there's no, we don't need to, it's no effect on the students, no effect on the parents. So if all of you are okay with that, I'll go ahead and make that adjustment. We just have to approve it tonight, that we're going to change the staff day from Friday to Tuesday. Good with that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, great. All right. And then the other comment was about Memorial Day, and we have the ability, we built four snow days in, and we only use three of them. So the thought here was, we have Monday off for Memorial Day to go ahead and make it and use that last day on the Friday of Memorial Day. Now, there would be a stipulation to this, there would be a stipulation to this, that because the contract reads that you can't take, you can't use a personal day on two days in a row, what we would do is, anybody who has it in, you know, as of now, they would be granted that personal day. So the personal would be for the Thursday now, because we'd be off on Friday, and for the Tuesday. So if they have it in now, we'll grant that to them. We'll let them, otherwise, they cannot use it. It's either got to be an unpaid day or a dock day, if they have to use a personal day. All right? So that would have, and what I'll do is, I'll clarify that, I'll send that out to everybody, and then I'll have to notify the parents tomorrow of the calendar change. So we'll put a quick little notice together, indicating that school's going to be closed on that Friday, and obviously, it'll be closed on Monday for Memorial Day. Are the five of you okay with that as well? Go ahead, Mr. Charles.
If they want to withdraw the day, if they were, are you going to allow them to withdraw the day, because they have put in for Friday?
Right. Oh, definitely. So yeah, if they have a day in already on Friday and they want to take it out, absolutely, they can take it out. So they won't be charged with the day. Anybody who has it in there on Friday, obviously, that'll be taken out of their bank. So they're not going to lose that day.
Right.
All right?
I'm good.
If they had it in on Friday already and wanted to move it back to the Thursday, that would still not be allowed, correct?
No.
Just wanted to be clear.
No. Just, they'll get the day back on Friday if they have it in.
Right.
Right. But nobody can use the day on Thursday unless they already have the day in for Thursday.
Thursday in.
Correct. Correct.
And the same for Tuesday.
And the same thing for Tuesday. That's correct. Correct. All right, so everybody's good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll need to approve that as well on the agenda tonight as a calendar change for the 17, 18 year. And then we'll send notification out tomorrow to take care of that. All right, let me give out the HIV report. Yeah, we can put it under CNI, too. I think that's where it was, or under miscellaneous, one or the other. Yeah. Put it under curriculum instruction. Or put, no, we'll put it under miscellaneous. Yeah, put it under miscellaneous. And just reflect about Memorial Day as well. Okay. All right, any questions on the HIV report? Mr. Schwartz, mom, any questions? Mr. Robinson? No? Okay. And then last thing, just very quickly, because we've been talking a lot on the superintendent's report tonight. At the next meeting, we're going to recognize some different folks. We have one elementary school left, which is Gregory. And then we're also going to recognize some accomplishments of the track and field team. We're going to bring in Will Lopez from the wrestling team and some other individuals with the wrestling, sorry, Victor, excuse me, Victor, he'll be coming in, and the ROTC. So we're going to have a lot of recognitions next meeting. So I'm going to kind of keep this. I just want to give a couple simple things to the athletic report. The girls' softball's been up and down this year, but they had a huge upset in the county tournament. Nutley is very, very good, and they upset Nutley seven to five. So congratulations to the girls. It's been a tough year, but congratulations to them. And the girls' track and field, second in the Essex County relays, again, we'll go into that next meeting more. The boys' tennis, they are on their way to a division championship, so we may be recognizing them. We don't know that at this time, but a lot of kudos to all of them and the coaches. That's all I have for tonight.
Mr. Rutske, I'd just like to add, I attended Penn relays, but I didn't see our girls, because the girls generally race on Thursday, the boys on Friday. I attended on the final day on Saturday. I just wanted to acknowledge that our West Orange High School girls' four-by-four-hundred team actually won. Yeah, so they, it's very, it's very difficult to win at Penn relays, because they're, high schools represented from all over the world, the country and the world. And our men's four-by-one-hundred team, they placed fifth. And our men's four-by-eight-hundred relay team placed 12th, which again, is a huge accomplishment. Don't want to brag, but given my Jamaican roots, Jamaican folks, they're just such great sprinters, it's kind of hard to beat them. So this is a huge accomplishment. And I know a lot of our students from the track and field team are of Jamaican heritage, so kudos to our West Orange track and field team, girls and boys.
Yeah, we're going to recognize the next meeting. We'll highlight all the students.
Yeah, you're going to have everyone, yes.
Yes.
And shout out to Coach Blake. She's amazing.
Yes, absolutely.
Ms. Mordecai, will they all be doing with her?
Maybe. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rutske. Now, at this time, I'd like to ask if there are any questions on the agenda from the audience. If you have a question, we have a clock for three minutes to allow everyone an opportunity to speak. Please state your name and address for the record.
Rachel Gordon, Eight Maker Street. I had a couple quick questions. So first off, the world language update. You said you were going to have Spanish half-year and Mandarin half-year for sixth grade, which sounds great, but if you're keeping STEM, coding, and art, what are you losing? Because there's not a lot of room to juggle in there, so I'm just interested where you're going to add this half-year. Secondly, map presentation. So the map, I haven't had a huge amount of time to look into it on my phone, but I will. So I'm assuming they're multiple choice, or they are, are they also like written assessments? Because you said it's adaptive, and it can be taken in, you know, a set amount of time, or you can move it out. I'm a little concerned, so how often? Is it going to be less than the benchmark assessments or more? And is there a parent permission aspect of it, not to necessarily, you know, to refuse or anything like that, but just in terms of, they mentioned, there was mention of like colleges would be geared towards that, and I know that there's been some things with SAT where there's a lot of personal information that children are, students are giving to these companies without their parents' knowledge, and then they're targeted to be sent certain things. And I'm worried about how much transparency there is for parents to know what information is going to happen, you know, are being given, that, you know, if you're on these online assessments, they always have certain things. So I just, I'm a little worried about that. But I'm willing to hear more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon.
Gina Velasquez, 22 Coral Circle. Correct me if I'm wrong, but did you say that school was going to be closed on Friday before Memorial Day, on the 26th? Okay, so on my calendar, I have, and I was trying to verify, picture day for my son, senior picture day, and the prom on the 26th? So it's still going to happen? Okay.
Hello, everyone. Sunny Mute Brown, 24 Coral Circle. Hope everyone is well. Last board meeting, I asked the question that went unanswered, and I know there's a lot of questions you all tried to keep on and answer. So I'm going to pose it again. And while Mr. Rutske did answer the question, my question was to the board. What is the board going to do to ensure the work of healing begins with the staff as it relates to the damaged morale? While Mr. Rutske has appointed Ms. Mendez, the staff will likely be reluctant to be forthcoming.
Ms. Brown? Yes, sorry. These are for questions on the agenda only.
Oh, on the agenda? It's not public, is it?
Yeah, no. So if that's not on the agenda, then you have to wait until the end.
Oh, okay, then. I'll be back. Thank you.
Mark Maniscalco, I'd just rise to thank you for the changes to the calendar. It's the right thing. I really appreciate it on behalf of the staff, and I want to publicly thank you for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the world language at Edison in sixth grade, it will be against, it's on an AB. So it's half-year Spanish AB, half-year Mandarin AB against a physical education or related art. We will not lose any of the STEM, art, or elective courses. We are adding Mandarin without replacing anything else. The other question, I believe, was about map?
Yes. Written versus multiple.
All right, so then the map was, it's going to be all multiple choice. There is no written component. Whatever writing is included or embedded in the curriculum is what will be used to measure students' writing. The map gives us information. It's not going to go out to colleges or to any other third party as far as communicating how our students are doing. That information is in-house, and it's for teachers only.
And the other question was, is it less than the benchmark assessments? And is there a parent option to opt out if they wanted to? Is it less than benchmark?
The map can range up to, they're giving us an approximate 50 minutes. However, that's for the upper levels. And so then a kindergartner, it's an audio, so the students at that level, they're not having to read, and so it may take 10 or 15 minutes per year, three times per year, same as the benchmarks.
Okay, as far as the transparency for safety, Ms. Gordon, that's something, we don't have to release any of that information, and it's something we're not going to do, even though it's aligned to the ACT in the park. That's information we'll use internally. Ms. Velasquez, yes. So one of the things, the senior prom is on that Friday. We know that many of the students, where's Ms. Velasquez? Many of the students leave early. They do have permission to leave early from the high school to get ready, whatever they need to do to get ready, so that will continue. need to do to get ready, so that will continue, that will stay on. The prom will still happen, there just won't be school that day. Okay? And then as far as the picture day, we've talked to the different individuals involved in that. They said that's not a problem. We can adjust that schedule. They've already worked on that. There's a meeting tomorrow morning with the principals that are waiting to hear the result from here, and then they'll go back and make adjustments how they need to. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Rutske. May I have a motion, please, for personnel? Let's see. A1 through... A1 through 4, inclusive of the addendum?
I'll move that.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion by the board?
Yes, please. Just wanted to say, you know, thank you and congratulations to Michael Wenson. Amazing teacher, coach, PE instructor, and I also know him as one of the best scout leaders and trainers of adults and the kids I've ever met, and he's just an amazing guy. We're going to, we're going to miss him. He has a great ability to bond with the kids and to really help and cultivate their development, social, emotional, as well as physical. And enjoy retirement, Mike.
Any questions, Mr. Schwartzbaum?
No.
Mr. Charles?
No, I have none.
Mrs. Lab?
Nope.
I'd just like to congratulate Deborah Andreola from St. Cloud on her retirement, as well as Arlene Brathman, and Michael Wenson, and Maria Carmen Farglau. They're all retiring. We're going to miss them, and we thank them for their hard work and dedication over the years. Mr. Calavano, roll call?
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mrs. Lab?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Vice President Schwartzbaum?
Yeah.
President Morticay?
Yes. May I have a motion, please, for curriculum and instruction?
I'll move that.
Inclusive of the addendum as well?
I'll move that.
May I have a second?
I will second.
Any discussion by the board?
Just nice to see that the Chinese program is still continuing and expanding. It's been a number of years, and obviously our children are doing extremely well with the program. And thank you to the Italian-American Committee on Education for their continued support with their grant.
Absolutely. Any further comments or questions? I know this is one comment you generally make, Mrs. Lab.
I'm ready.
Especially the...
Trust me.
Back billing us. Okay. Mr. Calavano, roll call?
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mrs. Lab?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Vice President Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
President Morticay?
Yes. May I have a motion, please, for finance? One through... One through 15? Okay. Okay, let's see. Special services, one through five. And then business through 13. Mr. Schwartzbaum is abstaining on item 14. So we'll skip over 14 to 15?
If you vote against something, you can't...
Yes, I understand.
You need to be internally consistent.
I understand.
I'll move that.
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Calavano?
Discussion?
We had a discussion before I announced. Is there a discussion?
Oh, question on item number three, B3. March 2017, on page four?
Are we just, we're just looking on that?
We didn't?
We're looking at page four? Yes, we're on, we're on finance. Mr. Schwartzbaum?
I'm looking at finance. I'm doing finance C, let's say D. So it's B3. B3.
Number three? Is it page nine?
Page nine.
Page nine, yes.
Okay, sure.
So page nine refers to the attachment, which I believe is... The, on the attachment for the budget, I'm looking at page four, which is the appropriations with the expenditures and encumbrances to date.
Which fund are you looking at? Fund 10?
Fund 10, yes. Fund 10 is the overall budget primarily, right? Okay. So here's my question. So there's a line appropriations for this fiscal year of 142,000. We spent to date approximately 96, sorry, 142 million. We spent to date 96 million. We have encumbrances of 44.7. And then there's unrealized balance, available balance of $1.2 million, which I would presume are funds that, when we look at the encumbrances, that those are funds that are somewhat are available, that are, there's no encumbrances to date. Can you tell us what the $1.2 million, how that's used as we go forward?
If on June 30th, we end up with 1.2, because there's still expenses that have to hit the budget for the months of May and June that are not encumbered, that $1.2 million will roll into surplus.
When you say encumbered, so I, maybe it's nomenclature, so I'm going to ask for definitions on an encumbrance versus other things. So you have, an encumbrance is anything that's in the budget? So if you have an item that has, that you have a projection, but you have, we have not incurred the expense, but we've put it in, that is part of the encumbrance?
Right.
So the unrealized would be amounts of money that we have not projected anything to. Is that correct?
The balance?
Yes.
Yes, and the balance right now, we're looking at, because we're looking at, we're projecting salaries from now to June 30th to make sure we have enough covered, and we're also looking at utilities to make sure we have enough covered. So we may see changes in the encumbrances. They may be pushed up or down.
So you, you're projecting utilities are going to go up?
I have to look at where we are. So we have to make sure we have enough for utilities. We did a raw estimate back in July, so now we're looking at where we stand today.
Okay. Most utility rates have come down, plus we have a lock. Didn't we enter into a contract?
Yeah, it was effective May 1st.
Which went down?
Right.
So we wouldn't see money going out?
Right, but remember...
We would actually see savings.
We did the PO in July, so now I need to look at it to make sure, looking over the past months, that we encumbered enough money for that expense.
This is only through March 31st. We still have a couple of months to go.
Yeah, but, okay, I understand the March 31st, but that's why I specifically asked the question of what I'll call projection. But these are, we are not on, just to be clear, we are not on an actual cash basis on the encumbrances. The encumbrances are projections.
Right.
So a projection by definition is an item that you have not received the actual bill, but may come in. Therefore, the unrealized balance of $1.2 million is money that currently is not, is not projected. Now, you identified two items. One item was utilities, which you're saying potentially could go up. Okay, I hear you, but it's interesting, because on utilities, we entered into a contract that we had savings, so it would be hard to fathom how we can anticipate numbers going up.
So what we're looking at utilities is we estimated an amount for the year. So now we're going to look back to see what we spent, what we have left, and we're going to see if that's sufficient funds that we have left in the PO. If not, we're going to have to up the PO, and if we have too much in the PO, then we'll decrease the PO.
By the way, one of the items, and, you know, we have the whole ESA program, you know, where we talk about utility rates, where we spent $11 million on implementing savings. We entered into contracts for savings. That, to say that we don't have enough money, I would be, I'd be quite taken back if those numbers went up. But, okay, but...
But I guess, I guess what you're saying, what you're turning around and saying is, where we are with three months left in the budget, so we've got, we've got three months, is that correct?
Right.
June 30th?
That, that you, you're anticipating using up the whole $1.2 million?
No, not at all.
Okay.
So back to your original question, what happens with that money, at year end, it'll roll into surplus. So the $900,000 we have left in surplus, because we put 900 into the budget for next year, will add to that 900, whatever comes out of this year's budget.
Right, and that's where I want to go, because if we have an additional $900,000, then we don't need to increase the tax rates by $900,000. In other words, if we have 900,000, we've, we've taken in the increase to the taxpayers, we said we had another $900,000. So we went to 2% cap, we took the unbank, we took the bank cap, and then we added another $900,000. And that's really where I'm coming from, that the $900,000, which would be approximately 75% of this number, is available through this year's budget, that we have the available funds. So why are we, why are we adding additional ta, burden on the taxpayers where we have the money?
Because when next year comes, we're going to take another $900,000 out of surplus to offset the current 900,000 we have now, or we're going to have to reduce our budget by $900,000.
But that's next year.
I know.
I mean, in other words, you have the, you have money. You have available money. I mean, this is almost like saying, well, oh, okay, I got, I have a million dollars in the bank, I don't want, you know, I don't want to use, I'm going to use it, but let me tax everybody, and, you know, next year I'm going to use another million. You don't know what's going to happen next year. Before you know, before you know, and energy prices plummet once again, you know, who knows? You know, we're drilling out, we're drilling like there's no tomorrow between everything. So who knows? Energy prices can plummet. I don't know where they're going, but to me, this is an item where, why, why don't we just use the current available funds that's in this year's budget without passing through another $900,000 to taxpayers? It doesn't affect anyone other than the taxpayers. And it has no, has no effect on anyone other than what I'll use the term, which euphemistically is padding a budget.
The, we already talked about next year's budget being very challenging. We don't have any bank cap. All right, so we, we had to have 900,000 of that be part of the budget. Not, excuse me, 9 million of that be part, 900,000 of that be part of the budget. Now you're asking for that to go back. And you are, you are the individual who indicated that next year's budget is going to be very challenging. So, so now you're saying one thing, but now you're saying something different.
No, I'm being very, very consistent. I, and I totally disagree with that statement. What I'm saying very simply is that it is, next year will be challenging. It is.
Yes.
But what we're doing is, we're not affecting, this has no effect on any of the expense lines. This is simply, it's, this is, how much is the, are the revenues going to be that we are going to go to the taxpayers? We have the available funds in this year's carryover budget to go into next year without going to the taxpayers. Now what you're going to say is, oh, we don't have unbanked cap. So then I think we have to be intellectually honest and tell everyone. The reason why we did this is, oh, because we want to have, we want to create a surplus $900,000 fund, so we have more money available for, oh, whatever we want to use. You have the available funds. There is no reason, there is absolutely no reason where this has no effect on anything other than, than everybody not wanting to perhaps really tighten our belts and say, okay, here's what, here's what we have to do without going to the taxpayers. This, we have nine, you're saying, out of the 1.2, you're comfortable with the $900,000. Why not just take the $900,000 from this current year, which will be carried over for the next year, and we don't need the $900,000 in the increased tax levy? Which equates to approximately 1%. That's, that's really the question. The numbers, the numbers, the numbers show it. These are objective numbers, not emotional, not subjective. So if, if the point you're making is, you want to have a quote-unquote "pet" or a slush fund, then let's call it that, and let's tell everybody that's what you want.
It's not a slush fund. The state requires that we keep a certain percentage aside in case there's something. I know we've had roof collapses, we've had water main breaks, we've had all kinds of things. We've had the Gregory Tunnel project that we've worked on over a few years, and when they went in to fix the tunnel project, they found asbestos, which increased the amount of money for that project. So we need to have something aside in case something happens.
Okay, so what, so let me ask the question.
How much money is in the budget?
Don't, I understand the emotion, I, this, we're dealing with numbers. Numbers tend to be objective. So I agree, we have to worry. So we talked about it.
We had the 1.8, and we are taking 900,000 out of that, and we have the 1.2 on this line.
But if we have a disaster, we have insurance. We talked about this. A roof collapse, we have, we have insurance. We have, we have all these things. That's why we buy insurance, that's why we...
Insurance doesn't cover everything, though.
Okay, yes, but it doesn't cover, you know, you have, you have the ability, and we have excess funds. We actually have $11 million in, in cash. We have $11 million in cash.
Mr. Schwartzbaum, what I suggest is, it's May 8th, let, you know, as we get closer to July 1, we certainly can have this conversation.
The issue is, that, yeah, but this is the issue. The issue is, you already, you, you make the assessment now, and by July, you say, oh, thanks, sorry, it's already done. I, that's really my question. My question is, it doesn't affect, this, we're not talking about affecting one person, this has no effect on personnel. This hasn't, this is simply a, what I'll call a cash flow management perspective. That's all it is. It's cash flow management, and the, there's no reason to go to the taxpayers and say, oh, we have $900,000, we could carryover, but I just want to have an additional 900,000. And by the way, the number you even said at the last board meeting, I think we should get the, we should go back to the table, was, it's not at zero. We're saying, oh, we need to be at some higher number. And I believe you said the last time, the auditor said we should be at a higher number. I don't remember...
It, it is highly recommended to, for school districts to have 2%. And our 2% equates to $3 million.
But that's not what you said the last time. The last time you said...
No, I didn't say that.
You were comfortable with the $900,000. So you have 1.2 million plus the 900. So now you're going to have 1.2, 900, and another 900,000.
No, not another 900.
Well, you have the carryover.
We use the 900, we use the 900 for next year's budget. So we have 900 left. If we have 1.2 left out of this year's budget, we'll only have 2.1 million dollars at year end.
Which is what we've had. We've been operating with 2.1 million dollars for, for a long time.
No, we've been putting 2.1 million dollars into the budget to offset cuts, and we couldn't do that this year.
Okay.
It's... Insurance aside, can you give us some examples of how you have used the reserve fund?
This is not a reserve fund, by the way. This is the reserve, a reserve fund?
This is a fund that we can only pull from the last two months of the school year. So if we had expenses during the year, if we have tuitions that exceed our budget, if we had lawsuits that exceeded the budget, and we had lawsuits in the past, we would, we would have to transfer within the lines. And then if we needed to pull money out of surplus, then we would have to wait until May, June and get the commissioner's approval.
I, I believe for almost all the lawsuits, we have stop-loss, somewhere in the neighborhood of about $25,000 for most of the policies. 25, no? What's our stop-loss?
There are several lawsuits right now that you don't have coverage on, that you are fully self-insured for the entire claim.
So you do have... Can you, so can you elaborate which ones those are?
I, I can't elaborate.
No, 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 because, because let's, let's come out how they, how they came about. I think that's a very important aspect of what's going to happen.
I'm sorry, but I thought we could only discuss legal and personnel in close session.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk about the, the, what you do, just so the board's aware, you do have several lawsuits heading right now where there is not coverage. You guys are totally self-insured on those claims. Generally, you do have a $25,000 stop-loss coverage. What is a stop-loss? That's your deductible. You pay the first $25,000, and usually you pay that in legal fees, court costs, et cetera, because lawsuits generally, if you're in federal court or state court, they can run, legal fees can... run, legal fees can run in, you know, into the hundreds of thousands depending on the complexity of the case. But you do have several where you guys are self-insured, and so you have to pay the legal fees and any settlement and/or judgment that comes about because of them.
You want to handicap it up? I, well, no, if we're on, well, but, but that's a reasonable thing. It's one thing to say, we are, we don't have insurance. I, I understand. Well, that's a separate side. So, now, just like any business decision, we would then go back and say, what are the, what are the expected payouts? Well, how are we mitigating? What are we doing, and what's, how much, so are you saying that we have millions of dollars that we have exposure on? Or we have $100,000?
You, you don't have millions of dollars of exposure, but you could have several hundred thousand dollars of exposure on, because the one thing I, I, I tell, tell folks is, when you go to court, you're putting your hands in the fate of six people who might not understand the law. And so, you never know what a jury is going to do. Do I think you have millions of dollars of exposure? No, I don't. Do I think that there's the possibility of six-figure exposure in some of these cases? Yes, I do.
So, 100,000?
Uh, it, I would be, there would just be rank speculation, but I think well over 100,000 of exposure.
So, well over? 500,000? Again.
I would say somewhere, you, you probably have exposure somewhere between 100,000 to a rough guesstimate, you know, top half million.
And that's, and, and that's if we go to full trial, as opposed to.
Full trial or settlement.
Or settlement, okay.
Yeah, because oft, very often, you know.
So, I as a, so I as a board member, I want to just publicly, I have no clue where we have that exposure on a case.
Well, I, I can explain in a closed session, but the one thing you have to understand, when you're dealing with lawsuits, New Jersey and the federal courts have a doctrine known as fee shift. So, if you have any type of employment practice lawsuit, if the other side prevails, if they get $1, you have to pay them the $1, and then you have to pay all their attorney's fees. And the going rate for plaintiffs, the plaintiff's bar in these employment cases is about $500 an hour. So, generally, what, what ends up costing employers the money is not really the judgment or the settlement, it's the legal fees you have to pay to the other side. And that's what's the driver of these cases.
Mr. Schwartzbaum, we just had a conversation about legal in closed session right before we came out here, and I explained one of the cases we're dealing with.
And I, since I'm not at liberty to say, but that it is well below that, that, that amount.
I understand, but you heard, you heard the attorney saying it was either trial or settlement.
Correct.
We just had the conversation, so for you to say you're not aware of it.
So, no.
We just talked about it two hours ago.
Okay, and that, and if that is the case you're referring to, it is nowhere near in the six figures. That's really my point. My point is a very simple thing, that from all, all information that has been disclosed, it does not appear that it would be anywhere near more than, I would say, 100 to 150. Okay? That, that's it. But then again, we'll agree to disagree because that's an assess, that's, that's a financial number. I know the numbers that were put forth in closed session, which I'm not at liberty to, to disclose, nor will I, because I don't want to violate any ethics issues, but those numbers were significantly low. Well, would you concur with that?
The, the issue is not whether we concur.
It's a yes or no, but you don't have to answer.
It's a legal conversation, let's leave it where it belongs.
Okay.
Okay?
Fine, no problem.
Ms. Mordecai.
Sure. Mr. Calavano, roll call. We didn't do the vote for finance. Thank you.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mrs. Lab?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Vice President Schwartzbaum?
This is through 13.
We're doing the whole thing, so I.
Do the whole thing.
No, I can't do 14.
So, are you saying no on 14?
14, I'm abstaining on 14.
Abstain? President Mordecai.
Yes, on, yes, on.
Yes, on everything else?
Else, and, and abstaining on 14.
Yes, my vote is.
On no.
He said yes on everything else and no on 14.
No on 14.
No on 14?
Yes.
Right.
Okay. May I have a motion, please, for reports?
I'll move 1 and 2.
May I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion by the board?
No.
Nope.
No. Mr. Calavano?
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mrs. Lab?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Vice President Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Mordecai, this is where we should have the two resolutions to revise the 2016-17 cal, calendar.
Calendar.
We have a Memorial Day, or the Friday of Memorial Day weekend off, and also revise in the 2017-18 calendar for the start of the day, on Tuesday for staff.
Yes. May I have a motion, please, to revise the calendar for 2016 to 17?
I'll make a motion.
All set.
All set.
All set.
Thank you. All in favor, Mr. Calavano? It's a roll call vote, or, or just hold it?
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Sure.
Mrs. Lab?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Vice President Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
President Mordecai?
Yes. Okay. May I have any report, please, from my colleagues on the board? Mr. Charles, I'll start with you.
I have none at this time.
Mrs. Lab?
Just one quick one. Today, the Nikhil Budlani singers from the high school performed at the Special Education Awards. I want to thank Debbie Reese for bringing her students in. It was, um, it was very moving to see the students sing. They really enjoyed themselves. The superintendent joined us, along with Jody Goldstein, Connie Salambino, and Dawn Ribiro, and it was just, I'm sorry, oh, and Hayden, of course, Hayden. Hayden was there dancing around. Um, yeah, it was just really nice to see the students perform, and also for the awards to be distributed among the state today. It's one of the pleasures I get out of being a board member, to be on that judging committee. Each year, it's just phenomenal to see those kids shine. That's it.
Absolutely. Thank you. Mr. Robertson?
In brief, I enjoyed the World Language Night, and the short films that were done from that, it's very creative. And I did tie in the chopstick contest. That's right. I was as quick as the top opponent, and pretty mean with a chopstick. Also, oh, totally, totally, I want to give a shout out and, and ask for support for a student, Justin Davis. We've given Justin an award right in this boardroom before for his exemplary leadership, and right now, he is working for a company, what is it, cut up, cutoff, cutups? That's gr, oh, fantastic. Fantastic. Then Jewel, give her a shout out first, well. But they are vying not only for presentations, but for sales, so if anybody can help out by allowing them to present, they get paid just to present, and it, this could lead towards a scholarship. There's a $100,000 scholarship that is potentially offered by the parent company. So, this is for Jewel and for Justin. So, if they reach out to you, welcome them in, let them do the presentation. It also helps them hone very important skills for, for success in their salesmanship, and it's, it's all around great stuff.
Thank you. Mr. Schwartzbaum?
I, I just have one, one quick, I guess, promotion. The West Orange African Heritage Organization will be having their annual scholarship fundraiser, The Men Who Cook. It will be held on June 11th, and it's going to be from 1 to 4 at St. Joseph's Church. And that's 44 Benvenue Avenue. Tickets in advance are $25 for adults, 35 at the door, children $10 if they're 12 and under, and students $15. Every year, the West Orange African Heritage gives about, anywhere between four and six scholarships, and they've been a very strong partner with us in the community as far as tutoring the elementary schools. So, if you have the opportunity to attend on June 11th, that would be great. Okay. The next board meeting will be held on June 12th at 8:00, but we also have special meetings tomorrow and Wednesday for residency as well as disciplinary hearings. Those are closed meetings for personnel, I mean, for legal matters of residency and disciplinary. Okay, now it's time for petitions and hearings from the residents. If anyone has any comments or questions, please come forward, state your name. We have three minutes on the clock to allow for everyone an opportunity to speak. Please also state your address.
Cindy Brown, 24 Coral Circle. Last board meeting, I asked a question that went unanswered, and so I'm posing it again. While Mr. Rutzke answered the question, my question was to the board. What is the board going to do to ensure the work of healing beginning with the staff as it relates to the damaged morale? While Mr. Rutzke has appointed Ms. Mendez, staff will likely be reluctant to be forthcoming for fear of retaliation because she is from central office. Again, I will suggest you ask the community to volunteer to seek a company, an independent company that does surveys, and can do anonymous surveys, put together a report to the board, and make recommendations to you. Also, I wanted to address the last board meeting where Mr. Irving Schwartzbaum, with respect to your vote with the transgender bathrooms, I would like to remind you that you were elected to represent the best interests of all of our students. Your no vote spoke to your disregard for inclusivity of safe space, and it was demonstrative of gender bias and marginalization. Thank you.
Tim Carter, Six Oxper Terrace. First, I want to thank Board President Mordecai and Board Members Robertson, Charles, and Lab for voting yes to support gender identity and expression policy 51445.7 at the meeting on April 19. The policy was written to ensure a safe learning environment for all students, and particularly to protect those who identify as transgender. Also noted at the meeting, it was written to comply with New Jersey state law and had been reviewed by our district council regarding the one no vote on the policy. Vice President Schwartzbaum, I emailed you about my concerns on April 27. You've not responded. I saw and spoke with you in person after the public budget meeting on May 1, and you insisted that you don't need to respond to my email to explain your vote, and that's why I'm here now. Mr. Schwartzbaum, while I'm extremely disappointed by your lack of support for this important policy, I want to tell you what I do appreciate about you, that you ask questions sometimes, and ask for clarifications, that you stated that this policy, quote, "makes a lot of sense", unquote, although I don't understand why you went on to argue against it and ultimately voted no, and I think our trans students in particular need to, need you to answer why. At the April 19 meeting, you expressed the concern about a section of the policy, as you said, quote, "A person can choose, based upon what their gender, what they want, which locker room they prefer", unquote. I want to make sure you understand, this policy is not about locker room preference. It is also not about the concern you raise that a boy may suddenly say he's a girl to enter the girls' locker room, leading to lawsuits. The policy specifically states, quote, "Students may have access to the restroom or locker room that corresponds to the gender identity to express, that, identity or expression that they consistently assert at school." The policy further reinforces safety and, and respect for trans students regarding dress code, privacy, et cetera. Why is this important? Here's a quote from the National Center for Transgender Equality. "A national survey by Glisten, the Gay and Lesbian and Straight Education Network, has found that 75% of transgender youth feel unsafe at school. Also, 41% of transgender individuals try to kill themselves at some point in their lives compared with 4.6% of the general public, as per the study by the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention." Finally, I'm not the only parent who reached out to you via email on April 27. I know of at least one other who couldn't be here tonight. She's the parent of a trans student in our district, and she encouraged me to share from her email, quote, "Mr. Schwartzbaum, I'm concerned that, as evidenced by your comments, you may not fully understand the issues and the vulnerability of the students in question. I implore you to review the relevant sections of the report attached, which surveyed the experiences of, of over 27,000 transgender youth", unquote. She attached a report from TransEquality Org. She asked me to especially highlight Chapter H, which I printed out so I can give it to you. The parent went on to quote the statistics on abuse towards trans students, and to offer you resources to help you understand, and again, to date, she tells me that you, you have not responded to her. In summary, I ask you to familiarize yourself with the policy, as well the statistics and research reference to better understand the reason for it. And I don't ask you to respond now, but I do ask you to consider, in particular, the safety and well-being of the most vulnerable of our students in the future when considering critical issues such as these. Thank you.
Yeah, me too. Hi, I'm Katherine Meyerson, and I'm a junior here at West Orange High School. I live at 14 Colony Drive West and 35 Beverly Road, don't ask. I'm also here to discuss some comments made by Council Member Herb Schwartzbaum about transgender and gender queer students in West Orange. I'm going to start off with some statistics, some of which already were mentioned by Mr. Tim Carter. So, as he said, 41% of trans or gender non-conforming people in the U.S. have or will attempt suicide within their lifetime. That's a staggering number compared to the national average. The highest rate of suicide attempts are from adolescent years, with much higher rates than any other point in a transgender or non-gender conforming person's life. So, adolescence is the danger zone. It's, it's bad, it's bad. Yeah, there's a danger zone here that we need to be aware of. There are exactly zero documented cases of trans or gender queer people attacking or harassing other people in bathrooms. Zero. However, 73% of trans people have reported being assaulted in bathrooms by others. So, the notion that we need to protect people from trans people, it doesn't add up, because there have been exactly zero cases of that, while 73% of trans people have reported being attacked by others. So, there's that. Knowing these statistics, which are easily checked by a quick Google search that cites national surveys performed upon thousands of transgender people, why does our council member attempt to reject a movement that would prohibit trans people from using their bathrooms, I mean, that would allow transgender people to use bathrooms of their choice? Are suicide rates and statistics not enough to prove that they need support in school systems? Are trans teens not suffering enough from oppression in other parts of their life that they need to also be attacked in bathrooms where they literally just need to use the bathroom? But my question, besides the entrance, besides the interests of Council Member Schwartzbaum, is actually why that movement would be put to vote in the first place? According to New Jersey law against discrimination, it is illegal to prevent transgender students from using the bathroom of their preferred gender identity. I'm sure that the Board of Education doesn't want that kind of publicity, being a representative body that, that denied their students' basic human rights to use the bathroom. And there is no doubt, Mr. Schwartzbaum, that the transgender students, families, and allies of this town will sue you, as you suggested to Mr. Tim Carter. And that will not look all that great if you try to run again for this council position. Represent all of your students, and know the law, as well as the consequences of not following it. Thank you.
Hi, Nicole Davis, 54 Sill Road. I also would like to thank those members of the board who did vote in favor of a policy that I spoke last couple of meetings ago and said I thought was actually a very good policy. I'm a clinical social worker. I work with transgender and gender non-conforming youth professionally. I have a lot of folks in my life personally who are trans and gender non-conforming. I work with adolescents a lot, and Mr. Schwartzbaum, your comments were completely unacceptable and showed a really gross level of ignorance about the subject. And I found it really frightening that somebody who was in the position to make policy that affects young people's lives could actually say the things you said and think the things you think, although I'm not surprised, since I've seen it by other people and other people in positions of power. But I said, last time I spoke, that I really thought it was a great idea to do a district-wide training for faculty and staff at schools, and I want to reiterate that point, and I also would like to include the board in that, too. I think that actually, those comments, even though most people voted in favor of the policy, damn if that was a good one, it never hurts to actually have more in-depth training[1752.20] damn if that was a good one, it never hurts to actually have more in-depth training about that and so that everybody is knowledgeable and sort of gets professional information that clearly is needed by some people more than others. And I really encourage you, Mr. Schwartzbaum, to please educate yourself more on the subject and to listen to what people are saying to you, and to not do things that are going to harm young people who are already in such danger of harming themselves. Thank you.
Rachel Gordon, again, 8 Meeker Street. I wholeheartedly agree with everything that was previously stated, but I felt like they eloquently stated it, so I'm going to talk about a different issue. So, I am again extremely disappointed in the honors process that seems so much wasted energy on testing and just adds so much stress to kids. I'm here representing several parents who couldn't come tonight and reach out to me. So here are some things that I've heard from some parents. One, testing conditions were, for most kids, in tables set up in the gym in Edison, and some had to take the social studies test twice because of a computer malfunction, which I realize is not like it's a computer malfunction, but how is that fair for a test that is very definition of a high-stakes test, that they had to take it twice? Two, a parent told me that their child, who got 100 in math for the whole year, got under 40 on the math portion of the test. So there's a huge disconnect between a curriculum and the test, if that is the case. And students who are not in honors math were at an even greater disadvantage as they have not been exposed to the same amount of new material as those in honors or who have outside tutors. Third thing I heard from parents. Appeal is a misnomer. It is not a real appeal because it does not cause a reconsideration of the test scoring or otherwise escape the primacy of the test. All it does is effectively give students a five-to-15-point boost on their test score, and they can then reach that level where they get a teacher recommendation. But if they don't do well on either of those parts of the test, then, you know, that's it. And then four, the teacher evaluation tool is also just a list of characteristics of an honors student. The attempt to be objective has resulted in a sterile tool that just reduces students to a number. So all of this wasted time, and the process could be so much simpler. For example, if you already have in an honors class and you're getting an A and B, you can go into honors next year because you have clearly shown you can handle honors work. Process solved. If you have an A in a non-honors class, you can go into honors if you so choose and see how you do. If you have a B or lower in a non-honors class, or a C in an honors class, and you want to apply to honors, you can look at the benchmark assessments, or maybe these new math assessments, and ask for teacher recommendations. No overtesting and less stress for teacher recommendations, as there will not be so many because most kids would just move on. The superintendent is always saying that he wants to make honors as accessible as possible, but all this is doing for the past three years is turning people away and not actually trusting in the grades that are given by knowledgeable teachers. Again, trust in the teachers and students and listen. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Robyn Isurles, 22 Yale Terrace. So here we are again, another round of an honors program implementation that reveals a great deal about how this superintendent thinks about education, children, and classroom teachers. In fact, this honors program is just another example of the disregard that the superintendent has for the professionalism of teachers, as well as the concerns of parents. I will be sending you all a longer version of this letter, and I ask you at that time that my questions be answered there. Problem one. So 60% of the eligibility is based on two tests. You may call one of them a writing sample, but it is clearly a test. It is not culled from a portfolio of writing that the student does in class, but writing done under the pressure of a testing environment. Now, if these are both diagnostic, in other words, tools to measure whether a student ought to be placed in an honors class, it would seem reasonable that there should be typically, there would typically be some correspondence between these two portions. That is, in general, proficiency in one would not be paired with very poor results in the other. A student may be weaker or stronger in one over the other, but it would be expected that they earn points on both or not. Or perhaps a student who is strong in writing auto-performs with similar results across the writing samples. If, on the other hand, a number of students show no consistency, either within subject areas or in the two types of tests, it would seem to reflect a problem with the tool, not the students. We have heard from several parents already whose experiences speak to this. Has there been any analysis correlating the students who are eligible for the honors program through these two measures and their GPA in the next year's honors class? And have you done the same analysis with students who became eligible after appealing or who were moved into honors from the watch list and their GPAs the next year? If you have not done this analysis, you have not evaluated the tool, and that is irresponsible and violates the promises you made last year when the program was introduced. If you have carried out this analysis, please share it with us. This has been requested before with no response. And frankly, it's astonishing to me that the Board of Ed has not asked for this. I assume you are interested in evaluating the very programs you endorse. Problem number two, the teacher rating scale. So here's where things get pretty revealing and interesting on two contradictory patterns. Given the current formulation as to when the teacher recommendation is used, this sets up the teacher as the roadblock to students getting into the honors program. If a student earns at least 65 points, then and only then is the teacher recommendation used. I presume teachers are given the list of the students who have earned 65 points, and then from that list are asked to give a student a score, which will either get them or not to the required 80 points. At the same time, teachers are not given the opportunity to offer their expertise and knowledge of the student who did not test well, falling below the appeals threshold of 55. Again, in reality, teacher's expertise and knowledge of a student is not sought. I close with this. What messages are we giving students, especially 10, 11, 12-year-old students who care about their grades and doing well in their schoolwork and take it seriously, who don't make the eligibility, or worse, lose their placement only because of how they performed on either portion of a test? What are we saying to them about hard work, effort, diligence, persistence? And this is not being too soft on kids. This is about teaching them the value, appreciation, and respect for the learning process. Thank you.
I'll allow you to finish the sentence or something. Are you making, okay. And you're going to send, you're going to, you said you're going to email us the longer version. Okay. Thank you.
Hi, Gina Velasquez, 22 Corwell Circle. I just want to make a positive note on a fundraiser that we had. I belong to a group called Awesome Marchers, along with Cindy Brown. And we were able to organize a fundraiser in April. And I want to thank several of the board members who supported the fundraiser. And we were able to, we were able to generate $1,500 that is going to go to the PAS organization, and it will award special needs student a scholarship, or several scholarships. And I'm just hoping that maybe next year we can get a little bit more support so that we don't have to have just one fundraiser at the end of the year to enable to give the students a scholarship. We can give more students, because there's only three scholarships for the special needs students, as opposed to hundreds of other ones for the general ed, which is great as well. So I just want to thank the community and the board members who supported the fundraiser.
Good evening. Tony Fields, Brookside Road, West Orange. For starters, of course, thank you very much, Ms. Mordecai, and thank you very much for Mr. Robertson for congratulating the team on their performance. I'm here to talk about Track and Field as usual. We are track. Our Women's 4x400 came in first place at the Penn Relays. The Women's 4x100 came in second place. The Men's 4x800 came in 12th place, and the Men's 4x100 came in fifth place. And also, a special congratulations to our Men's Sprint Melody Relay, because at the Essex County Relay, which took place last Friday at Liberty, at Livingston High School, to Kobe Grenville, Derek Lem, Abizie Amamey, and Elijah Mulholland. They took second place in the Sprint Melody, and they qualified for Nationals. We're going to keep pushing for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rutzke?
Mr. Schwartzbaum, do you want to address anything, or I'll just skip beyond those first few? All right, let me just go ahead and go.
I just want to make one comment, that I do have, I hear the concerns and the sensitivity. I had no issue with the policy, other than the one aspect of the locker rooms. And while the concern of attacks by others, that's really what it is. While I understand there's a New Jersey state law and it was passed, there are many, many things in the federal government and the state that, you know, that I don't necessarily agree with. We are an educational institution. There's a diversity of ideas. And I, that my issue is in the locker room. I have no issue with the bathroom council, but that's my own, that's my concern of litigation, and I understand. And that's it.
Just a couple comments. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
If you could tackle the administrative questions.
I'm just going to address a couple of things with the honors. The issue with the student who received 100 in whatever subject it was, Ms. Gordon. Obviously, I hope that that person had a conversation with the principal. That's something we should certainly be looking at. There is things that can be done for somebody like that. And your comments about that the teachers are not part of the process, the teacher rating scale is not really a teacher recommendation is completely untrue. The issue is that, that's why we have teachers sitting there. And we have honors teachers sitting there, we have non-honors teachers sitting there during the entire process. And when they're saying, "This is what really helps us," we listen to them, we value what they're telling us. And we have it at 6th grade, 7th grade, and 8th grade. So those teachers' voices are heard exactly what they're dealing with every day. And so, no, I disagree that the teacher recommendation is not really a teacher recommendation. As far as looking at the evaluation tool, that's something that we do every year. And we're just finishing up the process now about all the testing being done. When we do that, we'll analyze each of the questions. We'll look at how many students got it right, how many students got it wrong. We'll be looking at all kinds of different things. We do that every single year. The idea about roadblocks, as far as teacher rating scales getting 65 points, this is something that the honors teachers sat on the committee and said that they actually think the points should have gone up. And we chose not to move them up because they want to make sure that, and I've said this many times, that our job is to make sure we're meeting the individual needs of every single child. And while we would like every child to be challenged at the highest level in every class every day, and that's what's important and why we have students who receive different services, whether it be honors or something different than honors. As far as the teacher's expertise, clearly, that's why we listen to them and get the input from them. Because this year, the tweaking that really went on really came from the teachers. And when you, you know, when they're sitting there and they're dealing with the students, when they're teaching the honors class, nobody knows better than they do whether or not the students who are in the honors class are properly getting in there. So if they're not, they're the ones who are telling us, this is what we have to do differently. So the teacher's voice is clearly listened to, and the changes that reflect the honors is something, the majority of it comes from the teachers. We also listen to some of the challenges of the parents, and then we consider what they're saying and how that reflects on the honors program. But again, for the one example you gave with the student who has 100 in the class and received 40, if you want to email me that person's name, the student's name, we'll make sure that that is looked into. Yes, we did have the issue with Edison with the social studies. We thought the fairest thing to do was to make sure that all of them had the opportunity to take it a second time. That was completely something, again, can't control the technology in this. This is something that could happen in any time. It just happened, it happened with the honors program and the honors test. So I do apologize about that. But it's something that we obviously could not control. And Mr. Fields, before you came in, is Phil still here? Before you came in, I recognize that we're going to honor the students at the next board meeting for the Track and Field. So that'll be something we do at the beginning of the June 12th meeting. All right. Ms. Mordecai.
Okay, just a couple of things. I want to say thank you to Ms. Velasquez and Ms. Brown for the fundraiser. I wasn't able to attend, but I was glad to be able to contribute in some way. PAS has been around for quite a few years, and Mrs. Lab is one of the three who co-founded it, Cynthia Bailey and Angela, and I'm drawing a blank on Angela's last name.
Who's Maxine Ball for the Angela?
Maxine. Yes, Angela, yeah. Mrs. Brown, I know you said you didn't get a response from the board, but the board is very appreciative of all the teachers. And as far as a program in place for healing and surveys and things like that, as you heard our board attorney state specifically at the beginning of the session, we set policy, and the superintendent and the BA make sure the district is well-run. But at the same time, that's one of the reasons why we just gave back Memorial Day. We understood, we listened to the teachers, and we understand and appreciate them, and we want to make sure that they do feel appreciated. And I'm very glad that Mr. Maniscalco came up and said, "Thank you," so that that's a great step moving forward. But we've been working very hard in the teachers' contract and many other issues, and we're hoping that that will help to heal. But as far as a program put in place, we set policy, and the administrators will carry them out. And we have not begun to have that discussion as yet. We're still working on a few things.
Where's Ms. Brown? Ms. Brown, I've actually used a couple of companies in doing that. That's something we're looking into. The timing of it is important, though.
Thanks, Ms. Meyerson. I don't know if she's still here. Thanks, Ms. Meyerson, for coming up. It's great always to hear from our students, and we recognize and we hear what you're empathizing. We hear what you're saying. I believe you asked why there was a vote at all. We set policy, so whenever there's a federal or state law, we have to set policy in accordance with that. So that's why there was a vote. Sure.
She is right. Is Katie still here? But Katie is absolutely right. That law trumps our policy. And it's really important that we recognize that. So when it comes to that, we don't have a choice. If a parent says that I want my son, daughter to go in, that is where they go. And we have worked with all the parents who've approached the principals and myself on this category to make sure that we're being respectful to the parent and to the student.
Absolutely.
Trumps that?
Trumps, yes.
Sorry. I just want to respond to the parents and the students who spoke this evening. The transgender policy is very near and dear to my heart. For any student to come in, whether ESL, ELA, transgender, whatever, our kids need to be safe here. And the level of discomfort and uncomfort in the adolescents, it could be anything. My hair is too short, my feet are too fat. It just, kids are so freaked out every day. And to have who they are flip people out, it's just, anybody 11 to 25, my heart breaks for them if they're so, you know, uncomfortable being comfortable. And I just, again, I hope this policy gives some of the children a chance to be more comfortable in our schools with themselves, just their day-to-day stuff, because it's tough being a teenager, and it's really tough being early 20s or in college or whatever. But especially at this age, to wake up every day and not feel, this is going to be a good day for me, or somebody's going to look at me weird, you know. Think about locker rooms. That could happen anywhere. You know, you could have the Mean Girls taking a picture of, you know, Fat Betty and posting it, you know, and that girl feels bad that day. It doesn't matter where you, well, I guess it does matter, actually, because if you're so, it does matter because it's more profound. It's just, but again, I don't want to babble on, but I just, I hope the children feel more comfortable or have some sense of comfort each day when they come to school, no matter what their particular interests are, whatever. It just, I support the policy, and I was very glad to move the policy. And, you know, we all are different people. We all have our own ideas of where things should be. And I would never criticize, or maybe I would criticize, I have a pretty big mouth, but, you like that one, Mark? It just, I want our kids to be comfortable when they're here. And I hope if this policy allows them that comfort, I'm very happy to have supported it. That's it.
I'm feeling secure and safe.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Charles?
I'll make my comments brief, because I know we have back in closed session. I support the, about the policy, I support the policy because fundamentally, I think that the most important thing we can do is keep the citizens of the town safe, and that includes, and that transpose poses to the children who are most vulnerable during the school, the school age. To me, it was something that I support wholeheartedly. I want the children to feel safe coming to school. When you look at, though there are some isolated instances where schools have been scenes of tragedy, school, from a law enforcement perspective, is certainly the safest place for children to be, and, and so, whatever I can do to help support the children to make their school days, their school more safe, more inviting, more inclusive, I'm certainly supportive of that, so.
Mr. Robertson?
You know, I think the policy is really just a first step. I've worked in multicultural marketing and diversity for decades, and I honestly believe that while the policy was a step in the right direction, that we can do better in, in creating not only an, an environment, but truly a, a culture where LGBTQ feel, our, our folks, our kids, our families feel understanding, inclusion, and respect. I think that one of the things we need to look at, and I think it was Nicole Davis, I think, mentioned this, is training. My first life, I was also a social worker, and I believe that we have a need right now that, that can help our teachers, help our guidance counselors, help parents, help this board, where we should have diversity, I mean, true diversity and cross-cultural training that addresses, thank you. That really helps us to build a stronger bond in understanding and inclusion, and it goes to gender diversity, it goes to racial diversity, it goes, I mean, we, we think that because we're diverse by composition, that that's the same as diversity as a philosophy. It's not. And I know of too many issues with children who have, you know, let's just say there's been insensitivity, whether it's due to, with black males or Hispanic males as well. There's, we have issues that we need to tackle, and we have the right, I believe that we have a, a big heart and, and, and the right environment, but we need to give teachers, parents, and the board the tools, and I think training is something we've gotta do, gotta Also, to, to Mrs. Brown, I've long advocated for surveys and a town hall meeting, anything we can do to increase our understanding and to do it in a way where people can, can lend their thinking without feeling threatened and know that they can be open with their thinking, that's what the survey can do, and then the town hall meeting can help us to have a more open discussion, a greater, stronger dialogue. I think that these are things that we could do that will help us in, in, in the healing process, absolutely. And last, I'm not going to harp on and on about something that you already know, I have strong feelings about in regard to our honors criteria. I will say, the, the story of the, Mr. Rutske, the story of the kid with the one hundred, there's, there's a ton of kids out there, we've had straight A's, who we're supposed to challenge and not frustrate. We are frustrating and demoralizing a lot of kids. And when they, and many of them I know, continue to get straight A's when they didn't get into honors, and they don't feel challenged. So we've both succeeded in not challenging them and frustrating. But that's not your responsibility alone. I look to our board. Right now, not one member of our board can give an example of a question or a question type or a problem that is on the math or the English language arts or the social studies or any of that. And I've actually talked to the New Jersey School Board Association's attorneys, and I was signing a statute earlier, statute eighteen A colon thirty-three dash one, very clearly states that no course of study shall, this includes assessment test, shall be adopted or altered except by a recorded roll-call vote. Now, we did adopt the honors program overall, and when we first approved the quote "criteria" year one, it was with the stipulation, if you look back at the board meeting, it was with the stipulation of annual review. Also, anytime a program is altered, so anytime there's a change in the program, the board's supposed to review it and vote again. And for an assessment test, the board actually has a responsibility to know what is on that test. We've had great supervisors and teachers come up and present to us comprehensive curriculum for the honors program, but not the assessment test content. And the truth is that, as Mr. Hush put it in one of the honors presentations, there are questions on there that are intended to quote "stretch students." They're actually questions on the test that students have not encountered before in terms of the difficulty or subject matter on the test. There are actually some school districts that have rules against doing that. They actually have testing policy against doing that. Truth is, our board doesn't know what's on there. We don't know how many of those questions are on there, how many of those quote "stretch questions" are, are on there. We've had a student, we've had a, a straight A student who was also a half student come right up here and present and say, "I didn't know half of that stuff because we hadn't been taught it in class." So when, when, when straight A kids can't get into honors, when their grades aren't counted, and that's the thing that they're counting on and being counted against on a day-to-day, week-to-week, month-to-month, and throughout-the-year basis, that's a problem. But the greater problem is that we, as a board, don't know what's on the test. And by policy and statute, we are supposed to be presented that and presented data for the program, comparative data, like, hmm, how, how many kids are, ended up in honors in the high school program, tenth through twelfth grade, honors and AP, and the various learning communities versus the ninth grade, which is actually the first grade that experienced the new middle school honors criteria? We don't know. We don't have a clue. We can't quote any stats. We did hear some stats about new demographics and stuff that Mr. Fitzgerald presented. We haven't actually gotten them on paper, we don't know comparative demographics. We don't know. We're supposed to be making, according to the New Jersey School Board Association, we're supposed to be making data-driven decisions and be informed on these decisions, and according to statute as well as our own policy. We have five policies that address this on our own books. We're supposed to know what the heck's on an assessment test and review it and discuss it in your presence, and then vote by roll-call to approve it. And we have not done that this year, last year, or the year before. And we keep coming hearing the same issues year after year after year, and we even heard today something we heard from an attorney before. He said, "You know what's going to happen? There's going to be a divide economically because parents who can afford a tutor to teach their kids ahead of what their current curriculum is, currently is, that's what they'll do." And guess what? You know, that's the type of things happening. So we, as a board, and Ms. Mordecai, have a responsibility to learn what's on these tests, to discuss it, and to approve it. And that's not micromanaging. Actually, two, the, the two top attorneys with school boards told me that that's actually part of our responsibility. Thank you.
And Mr. Robertson, I will repeat what, what I said the last time when you made that statement.
Yep.
If you could please email the entire board your statements ahead of time. And also, you had asked Mr. Calavano to investigate when we had voted on this, because we have voted on this.
On the test, on the assessment test.
Mr. Robertson, let me finish, please. And you have to email Mr. Calavano and ask him when we voted on curriculum, on the honors curriculum, because we do vote on the entire curricula every year, and we voted on the honors program when it was implemented, and we saw the assessment tonight, we saw the presentation tonight from the Assistant Superintendent, and when she comes back to us with the rest of it, then we vote again if there's anything new to implement, but if it's the same thing.
It's not the same thing. This is Mordecai. You are correct. You're absolutely right. No, no. You are absolutely right that we did vote on the, on the honors program curriculum. We did. Check it off the list. You're absolutely right that we voted and had to reapprove the program criteria in general every year, what the criteria were. You're absolutely right. We did not vote on or ever review the content of the assessment test, and that's why, to this day, you can't tell me what's on the test. You can't tell me how many quote "challenge questions" are on there or what those "challenge questions" are. You can't. You have no examples of them. We were never given examples of what was on the test. We were not. And in terms of writing down what I'm presenting, read the statute, eighteen A.
That's not what I'm asking.
Colon thirty-three dash one. Read the five policies that we have. Policy is our charge. Read the policies. We have not voted on the actual content of the assessment test.
Okay. Mr. Robertson, that's not what I'm asking.
That's what I'm asking.
You asked, no, last meeting and tonight, you had, you asked about whether or not we voted on things. The last meeting, you specifically asked, you specifically asked Mr. Calavano whether or not there was a roll-call vote on curricula, and I'm asking you.
Not on curricula, on the content of the assessment test. One thing.
Okay. Curricular honors assessment, but you asked Mr. Calavano for votes, so I asked you to send it to him in writing so that he knows exactly what you're asking him, what vote you're asking him to research, and then he can respond to you whether or not there was a vote. And Mr. Schwartzman, do you have any further comments? Because we have to go back into closed session. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Yes, I will. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA ten colon four dash eleven, permits the Board of Education to meet in closed session to discuss certain matters now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education adjourns to closed session to discuss negotiations, be it further resolved. The minutes of this closed session will be made public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
So who moved it and seconded it?
Mark and Laura. Have a good night, everyone. Get home safe.